All right, we'll try again. Good afternoon. Today is October 15th, 2018. It's Rowan County Commission meeting. We appreciate that you're here tonight. It's the tradition of this board and thousands of boards across our country to start with a couple of things. First of all, we're going to have a prayer. This is called solemnizing prayer. That's actually a legal term. And we have it at the beginning of the meeting. We're going to have our sheriff, chaplain, Mr. Taylor come up, come forward. And these prayers are for the commissioners. We take what we do very seriously, and so we ask him to kind of focus us and to remember us as we make decisions on behalf of the county. And after that, we'll have the pledge. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Our heavenly Father, thank you that we can be here tonight, and we do thank you for the dedication that the county commissioners have and what they do. Their job is taken seriously, Lord. We pray your blessings upon them, Lord, and as we gather tonight, give them the wisdom they need on the decisions that need to be made tonight. And thank you for Rowan County, Lord, and thank you for the privilege we have to be here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. In case you didn't know, Chaplain Taylor's first name is Michael, so we appreciate you not tearing up anything in here tonight. So...
You should have told that before, when you had time.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And I'll use a point of personal privilege. Today is October 15th, and today is my 30th wedding anniversary.
Oh, congratulations.
And so, yep, and so, you know, my wife doesn't watch the meetings, but if she were to, I'd like to say happy anniversary to my wife. I call her my better 90 percent. Not my better half, but my better 90 percent, and I'm a lucky guy, so happy anniversary to my wife. All right. We've got one addition to the agenda, commissioners, it was provided for us from Nina Oliver. And if you don't mind, we'll add that to the consent agenda as item J. And then, do we have any other additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, then do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And then, let's see. The minutes, you have the minutes been provided for you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No? No one? All right, move on to item three. Public hearing for fiscal year 2020 CTP grant applications.
We got to approve the consent agenda.
I thought we did.
Did we? We approved the regular agenda.
All right, I'm sorry. Then, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, I'm all excited tonight. I'm just all excited. All right, so moving on to item three. And Franklin, is Franklin here? Oh, there he is. Hey, Franklin.
Hello.
If y'all hadn't met Franklin, Franklin Barnes. He's our new transportation director. He's not been here a long time. Franklin, why don't you introduce yourself to everyone? Kind of give us a little background, but we are honored to have you here tonight.
Thank you. My name is Franklin Barnes. I'm originally from Freeport, New York. I'm born and raised in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Moved to Charlotte probably about 15 years ago. I started working in transportation. I've been in transportation right around 17 years or so, some public, some private. Transportation is what I know, is what I enjoy, and I'm very excited to be a part of this team.
Well, good. Well, welcome. Aaron is the one responsible for interviewing and hiring. He's done a good job on most of his hires, right, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Franklin, welcome. So go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say hello to the entire board. Mr. Chairman, thank you guys for having me today. I am here today representing Rowan Transit. I do have my notes and my memo that I've asked the clerk to share with you guys in lieu of time and how grants run together. I'll just hit some of the points, but I did want to share what I have so that you guys could see what I actually look at as the director. I'm coming today. We're asking the board to apply for FY '20 transportation grants. There's several, and I'll just, I'll start them up with the first one. The first one is 5311. 5311 is a federal grant. 5311, that grant takes care of two of our positions, travel, communications, utilities, and handles our fleet insurance, among other things. That grant does require a 15% county match. The next one that we have is, that you'll see listed, is a 5310. 5310 is a federal and state grant. It handles rural transportation, so it supports those entities such as RVO or Rowan Vocational Opportunities. Trinity Living also supports our dialysis centers in the rural areas. It is, there is also a contract revenue, so we are getting a 10% revenue from the contractors, and there's no county match. The next one that I'll touch, and if I go too fast, I apologize. The next one I'll touch is the 5307. 5307 is a federal grant. This grant covers our Rowan Express, which is our commuter route. It also is combined with some other grants. You'll see that on the second page. The big thing with the 5307 is that it's used to replace our vehicles. We do have one vehicle that is due to be replaced in FY '20. It's the oldest vehicle in our fleet. They ask that our vehicles have 115,000 miles before they'll consider replacing them. That vehicle will hit the necessary mileage by that time, so we are requesting that that vehicle, we'd like to request that that vehicle be replaced, just so we can keep our fleet modern. The last one is 5310, and it's the urban side of it, so it services the citizens who are here more inside the county, in more densely populated areas, but it also services RVO as well as the Trinity Living Center and dialysis centers. There is no county match. That outlines the grants that we're asking the board to apply for. If there are any questions, we're asking that the board authorize the county manager as our official and adopt the resolution.
What size vehicles are these under the federal grant 5307 that you said that they wanted to replace them after 115,000 miles?
This is the smaller LTV. It holds eight passengers, has to have a lift on it. They've kind of downsized them, so it's a smaller vehicle. Just holds eight passengers, and it will, says it'll seat three wheelchairs. It'll get three in there comfortable.
With all the specialized equipment on it, that seems to me like that's a small number of miles on such an expensive vehicle.
I...
Are they gas or diesel?
They're gas. They're gas. On the larger vehicles, you can see it's 145,000 miles.
Franklin?
Yes.
I have a question. On the second page, grant number 5310.
Yes, ma'am.
It says that this is the city of Concord is the grantee for this grant. Does that mean that our people can go to doctor's appointments down in Concord, in Cabarrus County, without having to pay $80 around trip?
What it means is that they are the recipient of the grant, and then it's filtered out to other entities like the county as well as the city. It also, we do use that to cover some of our trips that are out of county, but that's what it means. It means that they are the recipient of the grant.
I was just wondering if it would cover, like, people with disabilities who needed to see a doctor in Concord?
It would cover it as well as, it depends on if they were in rural or if they were in the urban, but it would cover it. It would.
All right, thank you.
How often do these grants come up? Are these annual?
They are. They're yearly.
So this is something we do each year, then?
It is. It is. And I was looking back at it, and this is the exact same as previous years.
All right, any other questions? And Jay, this says public hearing, so we're going to conduct a public hearing. I will just hang tight, and then we will open the floor if there are no other questions from the commissioners. We'll open a public hearing if anyone would like to speak. Have any questions about this? Now would be the time. Anyone? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing. If there's not any discussion, then we would need a motion to accept the transportation program applications for the grants for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Franklin, thank you.
I apologize. I need the county manager to authorize as the recipient, yeah.
Make a motion that the county manager authorize the authorized official to make the federal and state assurances and certifications to application documents to empower to enter into the NCOT grant agreements.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Jay, will that get it? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing for proposed text amendments to Chapter 5 of the Rowan County Code of Ordinance. Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed text amendments are quite simple. It just identifies the length of the leash that we would require citizens to walk their dogs, which would be inside the municipalities and city limits in close proximity, be a six-foot leash, and then out in the parks and the open areas, it could be up to a 16-foot leash. And that's why I requested this public hearing, have this added to the ordinance. As we discussed at the last meeting, it was originally in our paperwork, and it inadvertently got taken out, so I'm just requesting that this be put back in.
Is there anyone going to make a presentation? Are we just going to go straight to a public hearing? Just straight public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, got you. All right, so we'll open the floor in a public hearing, and if anyone would like to come speak for or against, or have anything to say about this, then please come forward, state your name, and for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Peggy Mills, and I'm here because I'm definitely in favor of this change. I'm also going to speak for an actual expert who is here and refuses to speak. Nina Dix is the dog trainer and behaviorist that I've consulted with and many people have consulted with in the past, and I asked her to come. She's a little shy tonight, but I'll read to you her statement because it's very clearly put. Now, this is her quote. "Common knowledge for many years in dog training for family dogs is that a six-foot leash is appropriate for walking a dog in a neighborhood or a public space that is not designated for off-leash. It is my opinion that in order for your dog to be considered under your control when off of your property, the dog should be within your personal space. This protects other people, other dogs, and you and your dog from accidental injury from the leash itself, cars, et cetera, and also from other confrontational dogs. A dog owner is less likely to have their dog attacked by a dog, by an aggressive dog if that approaching dog views the owner as the one who is in control. Part of demonstrating that to other dogs is to have your dog within your personal space. Aggressive dogs are not interested in a confrontation with a human. They are just focused on the dog. A six-foot leash is adequate for neighborhoods and a non-crowded public space, but I recommend a four-foot leash in a densely populated area or environment where a person and their dog will be in close proximity to other people with or without dogs. In situations where personal spaces may meet or overlap, like in buildings, busy sidewalks, et cetera, extending leashes are never appropriate for use. All of the owner's personal, off the owner's personal property unless the area is designated as off-leash." So I thought that was a really great way to put it, and before I consulted with her agrees this time, I did look online, and there are countless experts as well online who say the same thing. It's a matter of keeping your dog in your personal space. It's common courtesy for other people and dogs, and it's also the most compassionate thing you can do for your own dog. So yes, I'm in agreement with this.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And then, yeah, any discussion?
Yeah. I just want to say one thing. I am a dog owner, and I know exactly what Ms. Nix and Ms. Mills are talking about, having your dog in your personal space. Unfortunately, we have citizens who are not responsible dog owners. Just in my neighborhood, Fulton Heights, right in the city, we've had a citizen who would let his very vicious dogs run and terrorize the dogs in their own backyards, and he thought it was funny. And he continued to laugh at the other owners that would come out and try and stop the We can't legislate common sense or common courtesy, but it's going to take both of those to make sure that our animals are under control and safe. The other thing I want to add, too, is Saturday, the Salisbury Dog Park will be opening, so if you need to let your dogs run and you're in the city, bring them on over.
Can Bob come up and talk to, ask him a couple of questions? Say that again. Come up. Bob, yeah, Bob, come on up.
Yes, sir.
So I know we passed this a few months ago, but I don't recall. What was the, what are the penalties for violation?
Penalties for violation of restraint of non-vicious animals, as far as citation is a fine of $25. It's not our intention, if this passes, I don't think we could be expected to go out and check everybody's leash length that we see. It's when we see some sort of a gross or extreme situation, this gives us a tool to work with to correct that more effectively than what we have now. I would tend to agree that short leashes in public spaces where other people, and other dogs especially are, would be a wise thing to go with.
So in the, so in the ordinance, your officers do have discretion of whether or not they're going to cite somebody?
Our first goal in applying any of this, unless we see an extreme situation or people are argumentative with us about it, is to work toward compliance instead of, you know, citing someone, so we do have discretion, and we use that.
All right, thank you.
This, again, the way I understand this, this is just in municipalities and parks?
In public spaces where people are close to each other, we recommend a six-foot leash, and one of the things that we see happen a lot is people use these extendable leashes, and we even see it, I think Don could speak to it, and parks has been an issue, and especially when other people have dogs. So we're looking for public spaces for the six-foot leash, and they can still use the extendable leashes in properties where they're out in the field away from close confinement with people. That was our goal in writing this text. I'm certainly open to suggestions and refinements to it.
What about our neighborhoods? Lot of, excuse me, a lot of subdivisions in the county, a lot of folks walk their dogs, so how does this respond there?
I mean, again, it's a general situation where we say in close proximity to other people, so that if we have a complaint, that we can act on that complaint and address it and remind people that they're in association with other people and other animals. It would apply to being a problem, more or less.
You know, I should have, this is item A under the ordinance. Do you have the ordinance there with you, Bob?
I have full section 536 with me, yes.
So it starts with sufficient restraint shall include.
Yes.
So what is that referring to?
This is, it's titled restraint of non-vicious animals, and sufficient restraint shall include, but is not limited to, restraint by a leash attached to a harness or collar or similar effective humane device that is physically capable of restraining an animal in confinement indoors or within a cage suitable for the animal fence or similar secure enclosure or temporarily in a vehicle for travel, whether the vehicle's in motion is stopped. The way this came to be is, is that we had some issues back in June with some folks here in Salisbury dealing with an individual wanting to use electronic control devices, and the next section we wrote in, and it was accepted back in August by the commission, electronic control devices such as correction collars are not considered restraint off of the owner's property. We had the section in there that was removed in agenda review that we're talking about now. Acceptable leash length in constricted public spaces, including sidewalks and other public pathways, where people and pets are in close proximity to each other, shall not exceed six feet in length. In larger public spaces that are open, such as fields, leash length may, up to a maximum of 16 feet, is acceptable. Being loose in the back of an open truck does not constitute being restrained. Sufficient restraint shall also include immediate supervision of an animal by a competent person when both are in the limits of the real property of the owner's, animal's owner or keeper. The only other mention, the rest of that, this section 536 talks about confinement and containment of an animal by keeping it indoors or tethered outside. The only other thing is that refers strictly to restraint is that all female dogs and cats and estrus must be confined, and then a mention of the penalty for non-compliance.
What I'm asking is, subparagraph A begins with sufficient restraint shall include, so it seems to me that what we're doing is we're defining what sufficient restraint is that was referenced in an earlier paragraph. I should have brought that with me so I could answer my own question, but in an earlier paragraph, evidently, we said animals should, there should be sufficient restraint, and then they go on to define what sufficient restraint is. So what is, we're defining it. What is above that?
The only thing that's above this are definitions leading into the rest of the text. I don't think, the way it's constructed, that there's any other mention of sufficient restraint. This is where it is mentioned.
What is the heading above subparagraph A?
Restraint of non-vicious animals. It's 536, and this is subparagraph A.
Okay, will you read that, that one? So that's just the heading?
That's the heading for this section.
So it's just restraint of non-vicious animals?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, all right.
You know, I hope that the general public, that all these technicalities that we're putting in here does not, that the public is still responsible for their animals, whether they're on a six-foot leash, a 30-foot leash, or whatever. If your animal tears up somebody's property in some way, if some, if your dog bites somebody, bites somebody else, you're still responsible, whether they're on a six-foot leash or a 30-foot leash. We're not limiting your responsibility in any way with this. This is just common sense that we're using here, and that you still are personally responsible for any of these things that happen with your animals. So I just hope that the, just because your dog's on a six-foot leash, if he still bites somebody, you're still going to go to court if that other party decides that that's what's going to happen. So please don't lose sight of all of these things that we're doing here.
I hate that we're at this point, to be honest with you, not just in Rowan County, but us as society, that we've got to spell out to people that you can only walk your dog with a 72-inch leash, not a 73, not a 68, not a 48. Well, you know, you could do it for a lesser, but it can't be a 73-inch leash, and that bugs the heck out of me, that we are setting how many inches that you have to have in order to be considered sufficient restraint. You know, my wife and I walk our dog in our neighborhood. We are responsible, tax-paying citizens. When a car comes, that dog's in my wife's arms. When the car goes by, we let the dog go out to the end of the leash, could be 20, 25 feet. Another dog's coming, we rein him in, or my wife picks him up, and so the issue to me is not the leash. The issue is, this is more of us just writing laws to reach our lowest common denominator, and I hate that. I hate that we're just, I know we're not going to walk around with a six-foot measuring tape and be that kind of county while we're doing that, but the fact that, and I said this last time, there's, it's not been a mystery as to why this was not in. When we went through agenda review, I didn't think this would pass with the six feet in there, so I pulled it out, so we can blame me for that, okay? So now we're, and we had folks that were in here that did say, well, we appreciate that the leash laws or the leash ordinance is being put in. I wish we had the six-foot, but we're okay with that, as long as we have the leash law. We just, we expected that once we had the leash law in place, people would get the hint they needed to be responsible, and I never in a million years thought that we'd have to tell them how long the leash had to be. The position I find myself in is, I am opposed to putting how many inches has to be on this, but I have a man that I trust in front of me who has done a tremendous amount for this community and has helped turn our animal services around, and so I've almost got to vote against a guy that I have a tremendous amount of respect for. And so, I've got this going on in my head. I don't like the 72-inch. I don't like the 16-foot. I just, I think we're being treated like, well... I just, I think we're being treated like, well, I just, I don't like it.
Bob, I've got two, three questions, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Public pathway, is that a road?
Again, what we're looking at trying to enforce is when somebody has been extreme, and we get complaints. It does say public pathway. I guess we could interpret it either way if we had to in an extreme situation. But we're not, again, not looking, whenever we were approached with this idea of looking at acceptable lengths, we looked at what other places we're doing. And most municipalities, where the sidewalks are, this is what they're doing, is a six-foot length.
Another question, it says shall not exceed six feet, so does that mean that if the leash goes out 15 feet, but I've only got it four feet from me, I'm still in violation because the leash is a 16-foot leash?
I wouldn't interpret it that way.
The, lost my train of thought, but, oh, have we ever gotten a complaint from any citizen that said there's a dog outside walking in a public pathway, and the leash is too long?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think I read a lot what you're saying, Greg. I think if we were going to look at it from that direction, we should have never put a leash law in to start with. From an enforcement standpoint, I'd rather know what I'm expected to enforce, and then have leeway, depending on the totality of the circumstances, whether or not I'm going to find someone. I guess technically now, they could have a 200-foot leash and run across the interstate and cause all kinds of wrecks, but they would still be in violation. So I understand your point, and I think I would agree that if we're going to do that, we should just repeal the whole leash law, but if we're going to have a leash law, I think we need to have some parameters in there so our enforcement officers know what they're expected to do, and, you know, if you do have some, someone who's trying to violate the, what's the word I'm thinking of? Their spirit, yeah, the spirit of law, then they have some recourse, so. Nice way to say it, I think I agree with both sides here, but I think if we're going to have a leash law, we need to at least have something in there that lets us, lets our enforcement agents, you know, know what they're supposed to do, instead of guessing, and then it's not really going to be fair, I think, to the citizens if each officer decides for themselves whether or not something's too long or too short.
That's a good point.
And I know I asked the question before, but I guess it keeps, if someone's got a 10-feet, 10-foot leash, or 16-foot leash, is, are we saying that they cannot have that length of leash, or that that length of leash can't be out? Because, you know, if my dog is four feet out, but the officer pulls, you know, stops and looks, but my leash is actually 10 feet long, am I in violation
No.
of the ordinance, based on the way it's written?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I would not interpret it that way, but maybe we need to look at some refinement of the wording, if that's a concern.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't read it that way. You can have 100 feet, if it's locked at four, it's locked at four. You're properly restrained with a less than six-foot leash. Yeah, I wouldn't get bogged down in that weed.
Would like to agree with Jim, if you're on a six-foot leash and your dog bites someone, you're still going to be liable.
That is actually in the ordinance that they're responsible for.
Yeah.
Damages to personal property.
Okay. All right, so, all right, so we've had the, we've had the public hearing, and we closed that. Any other discussion, any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to add back in the wording that's highlighted in yellow?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? I'm going to vote for this, and I hate it. Okay? Because I'm not going against what, I gotta give Bob the tools, and so I'm going to, I'm going to vote for it. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, item number five. I don't hate, I don't hate dogs not being safe, and I don't hate people not being safe. I just wish people would be responsible. Can we all agree to that?
Yes.
Yes? That's what I want. And I don't think we ought to have to tell people to be responsible, but unfortunately, that's where we are. And that's, I guess, what I hate about it. Shane, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Stuff's easy.
Well, more language maybe to get bogged down on, but.
Oh, good, all right. Thanks for being here.
Sure. The purpose of this request is twofold. One, we received some, really some spillover maps from Cabarrus County in the preliminary release of updated flood maps for the county. So you see these four panels here predominantly are in Rowan, but the purpose, back a couple, probably a year ago, when Conapless and Cabarrus County received their new flood maps, these were included, for whatever reason, I'm not sure why these others in the left and the right were not, but for what it's worth, once maps are issued preliminary, then jurisdictions have to respond, from FEMA's standpoint, to physically make these adoptions for the new panels. So here are the four panels that we're talking about, and I'll talk a little bit more about the changes in a minute. The other, the other part this kind of includes as well, is in this 42-page packet here, several changes to our ordinance. These were all at the direction of DPS staff at the state, so indirectly is FEMA, but, you know, we work with them directly. I want to say that all the changes included in here are predominantly corrections, there are also some interpretation assistance, when you're trying to figure out, just like the previous agenda item, this spells it out. I definitely will not bore you and go through all these changes. Anything you see typically in these text amendments, bold red are new, and then you see anything with strike-throughs in highlighted yellow are deletions. I do want to draw your attention to two changes here. They're nominal at best, but when this was put together, it was originally going to be slated for delivery to this board October the 1st, 2018. It's obviously going to be the 15th today. With the next agenda item we're going to talk about, staff tried to put all of these items on one notice before the Salisbury post to reduce advertising costs for the county. So on this page here, 15, that date will be the 15th. And then also, on page 41, this will also be October 15th as well, for effect of today. With that said, unless there's questions about the text, I'll move into the one change on the map side. All right, so this is a parcel down outside of Conapless's ETJ, off Rainbow Drive, tax parcel 249D072, the Watts family property. And currently, there's a little section here of floodplain that you can see on the property. We won't get into the differences in the county lines between our system, Cabarrus, the flood maps, the state, and all that, but predominantly, there's about 116-foot from our county line into the site that's identified as a 1% chance, or 100-year floodplain. And the revision, it's going to be difficult to see, but that 116 feet is right here, and this would be the, excuse me, the revised boundary for the floodplain. So this part in blue on both sides would be the 1% chance. You can disregard the yellow, as it's 500-year and not regulated by us. So it's a widening and a effect on a parcel. All other properties, to the best of our ability, in the county that we could tell in these new preliminary maps, were not affected. There are no widening or no increase in base flood elevations. But for Mr. Watt here, there is a change, and he's present to, and may wish to speak to the board, but the request, again, is to hold a public hearing, adopt the map updates, and the proposed ordinance changes. Any questions at the board?
I got this letter from FEMA, saying that we have until November 16th to adopt and have the floodplain management measures satisfy 44 Code of Federal Regulations, blah, blah, blah. Is this what this is referring to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do y'all, once we vote, do y'all file this, or does our office?
We'll work with Carolyn to do that. One other thing I should mention, it's in the report, but the frustrating thing with this, you have on the state plan coordinate system, all the county covered, and our adjacent neighbors. We don't know when maps will be released, so we'll be doing this again for the whole county at some point, and we're not sure if any of our neighbors will get maps before us. So it's one of the difficulties of having to do this as soon as they're issued preliminary and getting ready to go effective.
Does this affect the property, then, monetarily, or does it just require flood insurance, or if they were going to do, build or something on it?
I mean, it, I guess the impacts are relative. You know, you've got some areas of the county where someone may choose to build in that floodplain, and if it's not mapped, like this area here currently, the property owner can tell you it floods, and he knows, you know, he wouldn't want to build right in that location. But right now, there's no requirement from our office, based on these maps issued by FEMA, and the ordinance to regulate that. As soon as they become adopted and effective, or, well, again, speaking of the Cabarrus side and the 116 feet in Rowan, but if that were adopted, then, I mean, you definitely could construe that it has some impact on value.
Is it, is it my, I think it's my understanding that if you are not in the floodplain on the map, that you cannot buy flood insurance from FEMA? Is that correct?
You can buy it on Young Mountain if you want.
I'm sorry?
I mean, if you, if you're anywhere in the county, you can be on the mountaintop or wherever, you can buy flood insurance. They'll insure whatever. You can purchase it, it's going to be a reduced rate. It's not going to be a rate based on, in the 1% chance event area.
Okay, thanks.
The insurance is based upon the base elevation survey, and since they have to have a surveyor to do this, are our maps helping anybody?
They do, and I think probably some builders along the lake would sometimes disagree, because from our perspective, and what we make sure in our office, is when someone's coming in, if, if staff is able to assist them in looking at the maps, and working with them on, you know, potentially even going to the site and verifying that where you're proposing to build would not be in the floodplain, we're very conservative on that assistance, because we don't want to let them get started and then, you know, have an accident, or misread the map, or not know where we're at in the field to match up with the map. So it still helps a lot of folks, but the closer you get to that floodplain, the less confident we are, and sometimes they still have to hire a surveyor. But anytime they're building in, they definitely have to go through surveying, sometimes engineering.
All right, any other questions for Shane? All right, if not, we'll open the floor for a public hearing for FDPO 01-18. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on the issue of the new flood maps? All right, we'll close the public hearing. If there's no further discussion, then we would need a motion to pass the new flood maps, the FDPO 0-18.
So moved.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Shane?
And at the August meeting, it was indicated by.
Do you have anything for us on this statement of consistency?
There's not one required.
Is this for 0218?
Are you on the next agenda item?
Yeah. CTA 0218?
There is, it's in page, page six and seven. All right. So commission members mentioned the concern with having numerous residential storage facility requests for staff to work with the planning board and consider changes on how we can maybe reduce that number. We went back, since 2002, we've had 30 requests for these type uses, and there's a table in the document that kind of goes along with that. So we looked at several different avenues, and one of the things I tried to put together is, you know, I think anytime an example can be used is helpful to think through. So if, of those 30 requests, you know, there were a handful that are on very large tracks, so those are a little bit easier to look at. All of these are under 3,000 square feet. And if someone had a half-acre lot, what would be a two-car garage, 24-square building, then 3% would work for your lot size. You think, in the context, we started with more like an acre and a 1,200-square-foot building. That seems maybe reasonable, because in this, it's a, you know, diverging from board approval to someone else. The planning board really don't have anything currently where they render the final decision. If we had something that was set up like conditional use review, then that puts them in a category of no longer being a, not even a site plan approval like staff, where they're sort of an administrator, it would put them in the category as the board making quasi-judicial decisions. So with that said, we looked at that 3% as being a good basis with those figures in mind, and applied it to the previous 30 requests, and there were only eight that would have had to go to the board. And of the eight, there would be three that were within 200 square feet of that, that number, so maybe they would have chose a slightly smaller building, so potentially five out of that 30. And in working through that, I'll hold the, there's one other change, too, that we'll talk about in a minute. Move right to the text. In order to make one of these changes happen, we consolidated two sections, I really don't know why the one was in there, we've never used it that I can recall. This deals with any kind of educational service that has overnight boarding at universities and different things that we probably never see here. That's consolidated in this grouping here, pretty much the same text, so that's what you're seeing there. This is currently the meat of the storage facility requirements. There is one change that we did not carry over, and it was this statement here. When you have a, a statement like that that requires sort of qualification, or some subject, or objective review, then you really, as staff, could not consider what's compatible construction. And at this point, we've, as the board has seen, wood siding, metal, brick, And at this point, we've, as the board has seen wood siding, metal, brick, and vinyl. So I don't know what other options there are, but with that said, I didn't feel that that's really losing much in this context either. So with that removal, it's the same language. We also have left the opportunity, if it exceeds 3%, the lesser of between that and 3,000 square feet, they still have an opportunity to come to this board. If they don't meet that threshold, they can come here for a conditional use permit and build their building. All right. One other change that came into play as well, in working with the EDC staff and also fielding a inquiry on one of our industrial properties, we have potential need for this SIC group, major group 73 Business Services. It's currently not permitted in the industrial district. So we looked at what all was included in that grouping, and it had several that really did make sense for the IND classification. Lot of them, you know, maybe not as much, but some of those you may think of more of a commercial area, but exterminating services, pest control, cleaning, this one here, the heavy equipment rental, data processing, including these large-scale server farms, which, you know, some of them take up large facilities under roof and also not under roof, but maybe in these portable containers, seeing some of those. And then auto repossession and auctioneering services. So with that, that proposal would come over here, being permitted in industrial, and then you see the changes here for the storage facilities. And the statement of consistency is on page six and seven. So this requires a public hearing too and adoption of the statement of consistency.
Anything for Shane?
Shane, I was contacted by a citizen that he, that his neighbor had come in and gotten a conditional use permit to put a storage building stating that he would build the house. And what do we do, or is there, are there any repercussions if the house is never built?
There's not. I don't recall one. I think there's been a few where they have a future home, and sometimes that can blur the picture because there's no specific plans. They just kind of show that. To make sure, part of it, some of the folks we've worked with, you know, they do try to plan for that, and they'll lay it out, maybe get it perked to make sure it works and where that is in relation to a home site, but there's no requirement.
All right, if there's nothing else, hang tight. We will conduct a public hearing for ZTA 02-18 on these changes. Would anyone like to speak on the changes proposed? All right, hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and we will need to adopt a motion of consistency. I'll read that. So I offer this up as a statement of consistency. ZTA 0218 is consistent with a land use plan based on the following. The request is consistent with the zoning ordinance. The request is consistent with the district's purpose and intent because it upholds the same requirements as currently listed, but allows the citizens with an expedited avenue to fulfill their request. And that's a motion. Do we have a second? All right, discussion on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I would like to have as part of this is if the planning board does pass this in a quasi-judicial hearing, I'd still like it to come to the commissioners, at least on the consent agenda, so that we can see what's going on, just so that we'll know how many of these are actually happening. Because if they pass it and we never see it, we're not going to know if there's any issues with it. So I would like to have that at least put on the consent for us to see it.
This would be staff approval.
No, it's staff approval.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good then.
I would like to, wouldn't this your idea to do this?
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. Keep that, so much of that from coming here, but thank you, Commissioner Pierce, for that. Any discussion on the statement of consistency? All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then do we have a motion to pass ZTA 02-18?
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. All right, Shane, consider approval of SNIA 03-18.
All right, sort of a standard request. This is in the Mooresville Motorsports Park. As the board, I'm sure, is familiar with, there's quite a number of lots out there, a handful left that are not developed. And it's been the, since '94, the board's been favorable on anything in the park issuing these intensity allocations. This one's necessary for the 7,200-square-foot building. It meets all standards for approval.
Okay. Any questions for Shane? We're not doing a public hearing on this one. Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to say anything?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Shane? All right, if not, then do we have a motion to approve SNIA 03-18?
So approved.
All right, we have a motion, and a mic seconded. Any discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Scott? Welcome back.
Well, it thinned out in here. I'll be brief, commissioners. I know it's a long evening, and we've already talked about this project previously. Again, this is another request for Project Kodiak. If you'll recall, it's the $55 million potential investment in Rowan County for a new distribution center that would bring about 600 jobs in the next four years to Rowan County. At your October 1st meeting, you held a public hearing to consider the Level 2 incentive grant for the project, and you did approve that. The other item that was considered or discussed at the public hearing was an additional incentive, that being, for lack of a better phrase, an equipment grant. This grant would be structured as a forgivable loan. The hearing was held, and then after this meeting, the county attorney worked on the draft documents that you have in your packet. It's the loan agreement and the promissory note. As I discussed at the last meeting, we're under, we're facing a lot of competition for this project through Georgia, South Carolina, and I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead on this. Again, it's a lot of slides that probably aren't necessary. But right now, we're really competing with one community in South Carolina for this project, based on the feedback we're receiving from the state. And as you all know, South Carolina's very aggressive in pursuing these projects, and we're trying to think of everything we can to help us in our chances to win this. So again, we're asking today for the board to consider this $100,000 equipment grant. That would be, it's my understanding, pooled from your economic development funds. And again, it'd be structured as a promissory note, and the loan would be forgiven if certain job creation goals were met. And again, the public hearing has been held for this. Jay, is there anything else you need to add to this at this point? And just for an update for the board, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but our understanding is that the company's consultants are trying to schedule interviews with area employers right now to get an idea what the labor pool is like while this whole process is going on, but we're still anticipating and hoping for a early November, late October, more likely early November decision for this, but of course, it's out of our hands, but that's what we're hoping for.
I will add, this is consistent with what we've done one time before, so this isn't brand-new for us. We did do this, I believe, last, did we do this for Gil Dan?
Well, we did it for New York Air Brake as well.
Okay, okay. So this is not new, that we've done this before?
Is the, so is there, is this grant, or this loan, is it, is the South Carolina also offering the same thing, or are they offering something different?
We don't know at this point. They don't make those things public, and the company usually doesn't share it with us unless they're trying to get into kind of a bidding war, and so far, we've received no indication, one way or the other, regarding this.
Was this, so was this a number they brought to us, or is this a number we brought to them?
This is just a number that we thought, again, as the county attorney said, it would be consistent with the prior project. This is a much bigger project as far as the scope of it, but we wanted to also be realistic and try to meet your budgetary restrictions as well. So it really, I mean, there was no science to this. We just thought the number was comparable to the previous project.
So we don't, I mean, I guess the question you brought, how competitive South Carolina is, they give away a lot of money, so I didn't know. They're offering a million dollars. I mean, I know we can't, but I was just curious if there was any knowledge out there about what they're...
Yeah, and I wish we had those numbers. It would make things a lot easier, but unfortunately, we have to put our best package forward and really just hope for the best.
Scott, as we continue to court these businesses to come to Rowan County, what I've been hearing from our current employers is they are not able to find enough labor. And my question is, is the EDC going to look at all into recruiting workers from other regions of the United States, inviting them to come and live and work here?
Well, I think a lot of that is through the, you know, it's really a marketing question, I think, for something like that, trying to market the county a little better. I mean, for the immediate, you know, future, we're trying to improve the workforce through some of these collaborative projects like the Manufacturing Institute and things like that. And in this particular case, we really feel this will be a regional draw. It'll pull from, you know, Davidson County and, you know, Davie County, places like that. But, you know, to answer your question, I mean, we are trying to think of strategies for that, but it's just a multi-tiered problem that all employers are dealing with. And in the case of this particular project, we think the company is doing their homework, and I think that based on some early labor studies they've done, they like the area, they think there is the potential there for the labor force. We wouldn't have made it this far into the process, but going forward, it is going to be an issue.
Thank you.
We're in a region, not just a county, when we have a project this size. They realize that 600 folks, there's a lot of, lot of employees that they'll have to interview and to go through with our, with our work with Rowan Cabarrus Community College, with our Manufacturing Institute and other scopes of jobs that are available. I feel sure an employer that's looking at Rowan County for 600 jobs would be, would understand that this is a good place to put their business and that we would be able to supply 600, even if 100 of them had to come from Cabarrus County or 100 of them came from Davidson County. This is still right on Interstate 85 and easily accessible by our whole region, which has, what, 3.5 million people within 50-mile radius of right here.
And one important thing to note too is these 600 jobs are over four years. The first year, they're looking for around 147 people. Year two, they would add probably another 300, so they will be, you know, staging this. So it's not going to be all at once, and that should help the situation.
A couple of things. We are not unique in this. Pick a state and throw a dart at the map, and every community is dealing with the same issue, so we're not unique in that the issue of workforce is a national issue. So we're not at a disadvantage there. The things that we are doing has to do with the Manufacturing Institute, Better Jobs for Better Lives. But then you've also got in our school system, they, the school system, the Rowan Salisbury School System has started Advanced Manufacturing Academy, a Global Logistics Academy. So these are the, some of the things that we're doing to address the issue of workforce. So I think we've kind of got a leg up. We're moving in that direction. That's a good thing. The second thing I wanted to say is, for those who would watch this, where does $100,000 come from for us to use in this competitive environment? To remind you, a couple of years ago, the North Carolina Legislature passed, I believe it was a service tax. Is that the service tax? Is this coming from the service tax?
Sales tax.
Well, the sales tax on service, yeah. So, yeah, so our part of that, Rowan County's part of that, is about $2 million. And so the law requires that that new money that is being sent to Rowan County from the state be used on only two things, and that is education and economic development. So this board agreed with Rowan Salisbury School System that we would split that with them. So we give them a million of that, and then we retain a million of that, and we use that for economic development projects to try to bring jobs to Rowan County. So if you're wondering, where's $100,000 going to come from? It's coming from that restricted fund that the state is providing for us now. So just to remind the public, that's where that's coming from. Any other questions or comments for Scott? All right, if not, then we need a motion to approve the incentive for the EDC Project Kodiak. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Scott?
All right.
Go get them, man.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, thank you. All right, finance report.
The first graph that you see today is the cumulative expenditure report. We just changed out the slides, I guess. You usually see revenue first. So on this, our expenditures through the month of September were $32,073,000 in comparison to last year and the year before. You can see that we're right on track. This year and last year, we've spent 21% of expenditures through the first three months of the year. The next slide is our cumulative revenue comparison. We have collected or recorded in revenue 44.4 million, and that is 55% of our budget. The next slide.
Can I stop you there? So on these first two pages, it looks like our expenditures are up by almost exactly $700,000 over '18?
Yes, sir.
But then the next page, our revenue appears to be up by about 1.1 million?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's a positive trend?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're tracking very closely to last year. I mean, the exact same percent of budget in this year and last. The next graph is property tax. This is sales tax. Okay. All right. So on October 15th, we received the last distribution for fiscal year 2018. And so that year is now complete, and we received 24.5 million for the year. The year before was 23.65%. That's an increase of 3.7% from year over year. And we were also like 3.5% greater than budget. So that's where we expected. The next slide is the monthly sales tax. And it's, we received 2.3 million in the month of June and as opposed to 2 million the month before, the June in 2017. And the final graph?
That's one month, though.
That's one month.
It's not through. It's one month.
Right. The graph before showed cumulative revenue for the year. There, is there another? Okay, and the last graph is property tax. We've received 44.4... Is there another? Okay. And the last graph is property tax. We've received 44.4 million through the month of August. The year before, it was 43,254,000. And that is 55% of budget for property taxes after the month of August for the last three years. So it's been very consistent. I'll take any questions, if anybody has any.
Consistency, a good thing.
It is.
All right. Thank you. Item number 10. Wait a minute. Yep. Item number 10, budget amendments. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So move.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Lady and gentlemen, I think that's it.
Move to Jane.
Second.
Thank you. Well done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.